All right, I'd like to resume our October 22 board meeting. And before we go on to the next agenda item, I do want the board to have a minute to maybe look at our agenda. And I'm looking at the time and looking at how many more items we have to go. And so just to be clear, we're on the conference agenda item and we have G2, G4, G5, G6, and G7 to go through. We have actually completed 1, 3, and 8. Do we feel like we can accomplish this within the next hour or so? Or is there something that we would like to pull? Or table, I'm sorry, table for a future meeting?
Is there any time element on the OT services?
Yes.
Okay, how about the kindergarten student entry profile?
No.
Although we have people here on that.
Yeah, we do. Got four.
I would really like to do it.
Let's go, let's just go with it.
Okay, so let's go and see, let's see.
They'll talk much faster.
I was gonna say that the one that is the longest item is that time sensitive, which the Healthy Kids survey is the next item on the agenda.
No.
The presenter has sat here through the whole meeting. Let's not make her come back.
So we have him here, why don't we do this? Why don't we try to go through it? And I-
May I suggest that we put that one at the end and we work with the other ones first?
We do have the presenter here who's been here waiting this whole time. I would just remind us that our comments could be brief as we move forward. So let's do this. All right, so we're going to go ahead and have the presentation for the Board of Education regarding the Healthy Kids survey, which we care a lot about.
So I'd like to present Melissa Wilkins. She's the Prevention Coordinator from the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse to present information. And I also have the recent survey in print to pass out to the board and those on the dais. Ms. Wilkins?
Good evening. Thank you for having me and putting me on now, not keeping me till the end. So my name's Melissa Wilkins. I'm the Prevention Coordinator with Fighting Back in the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse. I've been with the council for five years and have had the opportunity to work alongside the Santa Barbara Unified School District to provide prevention services within the schools as well as in the community. So I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the California Healthy Kids Survey data. What you'll notice from the handout that you just received is this is a little bit more comprehensive in all of the information that it includes. This is a great cheat sheet. I love these every time they put them out. So my presentation in particular is gonna focus on substance abuse and it's also going to look at trending data. So what this is a snapshot of how students responded just for the year 2013. And this presentation is going to look a little bit more longitudinally so that we can really see kind of where the trends are taking us. So for those of you that, well, I think all of you know, California Healthy Kids Survey data looks at the demographics of the student population. It looks at resiliency and youth development, alcohol, tobacco, and other drug use, violence and safety, physical and mental health amongst our students. It's administered to 7th grade, 9th grade, and 11th grade students. It's also administered at the elementary school level, although the participation at the elementary school was limited this year. So this particular data is going to be focused primarily on 7th, 9th, and 11th grade students. What this shows you is the sample size. And what you'll see is that 86% of 7th graders participated in the survey, 68% of 9th graders participated in the survey, and 55% of 11th graders participated in the survey this past year. Typically, you need 60% participation to really have true validity and representation when you're looking at data. So we're working with our school administration to really make sure that this upcoming school year, there's more inclusion on the 11th grade part. So the first slide that I want to look at is looking at teen alcohol use. This is measuring past 30-day use. So this is a number of students who have reported using alcohol in the last 30 days. And when we refer to teen use, this is considered current use. So there's a look at lifetime data and then there's a look at current data. So past 30-day use is considered to be current use. So you can look at the horizontal and vertical axes and see the 7th, 9th, and 11th grade responses and the level of use that they're reporting. So what you see is 7th grade is reporting, 6% of students report using alcohol in the last 30 days, 14% at the 9th grade level, and 31% at the 11th grade level. And overall, you can see a downward trend in students that are reporting using alcohol in the last 30 days. This is still the number-one drug of choice, though, among our youth here locally as well as statewide. The next slide looks at binge drinking. Binge drinking is defined as drinking five or more drinks in a few hours. So this particular type of drinking is concerning for anyone, really, but particularly for adolescents because of the development of the adolescent brain and the impact that it has on them physically as well as their ability to make sound decisions. So this type of drinking is particularly concerning. And you can see there's still a downward trend in students who are reporting binge drinking in the last 30 days. At the 7th grade level, you have a 1% students that are reporting binge drinking. You have 7% among 9th grade and 11, 20% among 11th grade. What the other kind of comment that I wanted to make on this slide is, and it's in the data that you have here, is looking at perception of harm. And that's something that we look at from our agency perspective and especially from a prevention standpoint, is that there's a significant number of students who report having, there's no perception of harm associated with drinking that amount of alcohol in such a short timeframe. So that's something that we definitely address in our prevention programming as well as interventions that we do with students. So the next one is marijuana use. Marijuana is the close second to alcohol insofar as students who are reporting use. So you can see that we have at the 7th grade level, 3% are reporting having used marijuana in the last 30 days, 10% at the 9th grade level, and 21% at the 11th grade level. Did I say that right? And again, we're seeing overall downward trend in students who are reporting marijuana use. Something to keep in mind is that the marijuana that is being accessed by teens now is very different from marijuana that's been accessed historically by teens because of the difference in the THC content in the marijuana now, particularly associated with marijuana that is being accessed through dispensaries, has a much higher concentration of THC, which makes it much more addictive to adolescents. There's also a lot of research recently on the effects of marijuana on the developing teen brain. And some of the more longitudinal studies are showing that even when teens are stopping use, that the damage is remaining later in life.
I have a question about that. Sorry to interrupt.
No worries.
We don't have dispensaries in Santa Barbara, so does that mean that our students are still accessing dispensary marijuana from other places?
That's a good question. Up until recently, there were still dispensaries in Santa Barbara. And what we know is that the THC from, let me put it this way, from individuals who are growing marijuana for medicinal purposes has a much stronger THC content than marijuana did in the past because they're refining it to such a way that it's much more potent.
I have a question. Just clarification, just so we're on the same page. You just coincidentally, when you talk about, you say the last 30 days, the last 30 days, this is really a year-old information. This was November of last year.
Right.
Which is exactly the time we started the Drug Dogs in the 212, 213 number. And you see that decline from 26% to 21%. That's just about a month after we started Drug Dogs.
It is, and it's been an interesting topic of conversation. And so one thing to keep in mind is this is students who are reporting use either on campus or off-campus. And we'll look at the use on-campus data as well. But yeah. For drinking and driving, this is asking students whether they have ever driven after drinking or driven with a friend who has been drinking. So you have 13% at the 9th grade, well, you can read that. But what I can tell you is it's slightly down from the year before. The year prior, it was 16% in the 9th grade level and 25% in the 11th grade level. So far as the 7th grade response regarding 41% who are reporting having been a passenger in a car that was driven by someone who'd been drinking, that stayed the same over the past two years. So this is kind of in reference to your statement. It's looking at responses of use alcohol on the school property in the past 30 days, marijuana on the school property. And then the last question is asking whether they were drunk or high on school property, meaning they were using off-campus and then coming to school under the influence. So all of these went down in comparison to 2011, 2012, with the exception of the 11th grade at the 4%. That went up only by 1%. But the rest of the data all dropped. I can give you the graph or I can read the numbers to you. Do you want the difference in the point system? I know everyone's tired. I can, I'll email you the graph. But generally speaking, every single one of these responses dropped by about 3%. The one drunk or high on school property ever, the responses down there, the 9th grade was 13%, and then the 11th grade was 22%. So those were actually pretty significant decreases. So another indication-
I just had a question. Prior years, they were also high? So there was a definite dip just last year in those?
I'll have to look at that. I don't have that memorized. I have the 2011, 2012 right in front of me, but I could look at that for you. It's a good question. Violence and safety on school property is another indicator that we look at because of the correlation between that and substance use. So these questions, which you can see up here, remained very similar over the past couple of years.
And you don't ever break down this data as far as, like, demographics? So if it's a certain population being pushed more than the other, beaten up, or, I'm thinking actually specifically for students with special needs?
There is breakdown, there are breakdowns like that. I can give you, there's a couple of websites that you can actually put in the different indicators and it charts it for you, which is really great. So I have seen various charts that break it down demographically as well as with other This one is weapons on the school property. And these responses also remain very similar to 2011, 2012, and then years prior to that as well. So one of the other indicators that we look at is depression. And the definition of depression is students who reported that they felt so sad and hopeless almost every day for two weeks or more that they stopped doing some usual activities. And when they're asked, they're asked if they've felt this way any time in the past 12 months. So when you look at this, again, these numbers were very similar to years prior, but it's a really significant number of students who are reporting feelings of depression. And this particular number looks at a variety of different indicators to really determine the need of, or the youth who are in need of substance abuse intervention or treatment. And so it's drawn not only from the California Healthy Kids Survey data, but also from other community indicators. And so it's estimated 21% of students in Santa Barbara High Unified School District need substance abuse intervention or treatment. And we're here, we're here with our services and ready to help with that. The next slide basically is just reminding you of the programs that are available through the Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse. You're all very aware of our Youth Service Specialist programs. They're present in each of the secondary schools. We have the intervention programs, including Reconnecting Youth, which is a class for youth who've already identified to be using drugs and alcohol. And it's intended to stop their use from continuing and prevent relapse. And then it helps them with mood management. We also have our individual counseling and support that's offered by our Youth Service Specialists as well as our prevention programs through Friday Night Live and Club Live. And it was a long time ago in the meeting that you'll remember our lovely leader who presented that this week is Red Ribbon Week. Yes. So we have a variety of different school-wide prevention programs that really work on raising awareness about risks and harms associated with substance use and abuse. I welcome questions.
Thank you. Questions?
I may or may not be able to answer.
Mr. Herron.
I would just point out that this document is a county document.
Yes, that is true.
We're talking about county.
Yes.
So the interesting thing is to look at our numbers compared to this. And I think you'll find our district is far better in every category than what our county is.
Thank you for pointing that out because this particular presentation is specific to the Santa Barbara Unified School District, which I should have clarified at the beginning.
Thank you. Dr. Bus?
Sorry. The previous slide you had about the 21% of students, it'd be great if we can get a little more information back about how you calculate that number or how you come up with an estimate. I'd be interested. Thank you.
I wrote the same question.
Great.
Question, did you also do anything on cyberbullying for our district?
Yes.
Okay.
And I just read the numbers and I'm trying to remember them off the top of my head, but I don't want to give you the wrong number. But I can get that information to you.
Okay.
What meeting were we in, Dr. Cash, where the question was asked, what's the, oh, at the forum last week? The question was asked to one of, a sheriff's officer that said, what's the biggest headache that you hear from students? And they said it was Facebook. So I take that to be cyberbullying.
Yes.
So that's, yeah, great.
I would just say it'd be great, it's time to update the slide with the new district name. And I assume-
I caught that as I was reading.
I can see you catching it at that moment. And I guess that is my question, were you just thinking about the secondary schools or do you include the 5th grade data when you're coming up with your substance abuse number? I mean, obviously, the numbers were very low that we saw for our district, but do you, do you work with elementary-age kids?
Are you talking about this particular treatment number?
This particular, just the one on this slide alone? Were you just talking about secondary schools?
I'm gonna go ahead and say yes to that. Because, yeah.
Okay.
I will definitely get the exact calculation, though.
Okay.
So that you have the different indicators that are included in that.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much for staying a very long night, and we appreciate the information and look forward to the follow-up. It sounds like there's some pieces of information we might get in the future, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Have a good night.
All right, so we have Discussion of Field Maintenance and Scheduling. I'm actually going to leave it to the very end. That is an item that can come back to us. So the next item we'll discuss is the Discussion of Occupational Therapy Services for the 2014-15 school year. Ms. Rodriguez.
Good evening, Board President Limon, Board members, Superintendent Dr. Cash, and Cabinet. As you may recall, the Special Education Department presented at the June 25, 2013 board meeting, we shared the four FICMAT goals. One of the goals is to provide effective programs and services for our students with unique needs. As a result, the Special Education Department is continuously evaluating programs and services for our students. This evening, I would like to present the district's proposed plan to provide occupational therapy for our students who are currently receiving this service from the Santa Barbara County Education Office. Occupational therapy is the improvement of sensory integration, handling objects, posturing of one's body, and increasing daily living functioning. It is the art and science of directing one's participation in selected tasks to restore, reinforce, and enhance performance, facilitate learning, those skills and functions essential for adaptation and productivity, diminish or correct pathology, and to promote and maintain health. The purpose of occupational therapy in the public school setting is to support positive educational outcomes as described by the State of California State Performance Plan. Occupational therapy works with the educational team to support a child's ability to gain access to the general education curriculum, meet state standards, make adequate yearly progress, participate in post-secondary education, and become functional independent citizens upon graduation. In school-based practice, occupational therapy focus is on the child's activity limitation and participation restrictions and how the child will gain access to the educational program, whereas the medical occupational therapy focus is on projected limitations of a singular diagnosis, disease, or disorder. The district projects 99 students with occupational therapy will be affected by this transition of services. If the student has equipment as per his or her IEP, the equipment purchased with low incident funds will transfer to the student's district OT program. The district will offer the OT positions to displace Santa Barbara County Education Office OT staff. For the first year of implementation, the number of OT staff will be determined by OT caseload as per Santa Barbara Education, Special Education Local Plan Area Recommended Guidelines. The OT provider will have a correct credential authorization to provide services in this area. The district sent a tele-parent message in English and Spanish to parents of special needs students. The message explained that the district scheduled a CPAC meeting on Monday, October 14, 2013 to discuss the plan to become the primary OT provider for SBUSD students. In addition, a flyer in English and Spanish was sent to parents with students receiving OT services, inviting them to attend the CPAC meeting and participate in the OT plan discussion. On Monday, October 14, 2013, there were approximately 35 parents, including special education staff, that attended the OT plan presentation. 90% were Spanish-speaking parents. The district presented and answered questions. Dr. Jurese Butterfield, SALPA director, was in attendance. Dr. Butterfield commented that there was a large participation of Spanish-speaking parents. Currently, the Santa Barbara County Education Office is providing OT services to 128 students, including students in the regional programs. The cost per student is $3,042. The total cost is $389,401. The projected 99 students requiring OT services for 2014-2015 school year will require the district to hire 2.5 OT staff. Should this be the case, the projected cost for the district will be $256,500. There will be a savings of $132,901. That is about approximately $2,590 per student, which would be savings of $451 per student. The Santa Barbara Unified School District assures that there will be compliance with all federal and state laws and regulations and SALPA policies. Effective 2014-2015 school year, the district is confident that it will be able to provide a school-based occupational therapy service model for Santa Barbara Unified School District students with unique needs that are attending our comprehensive school sites. The district is not proposing to provide occupational therapy service to district students enrolled in regional programs operated by the Santa Barbara County Education Office.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Board, questions or comments? Ms. Parker, then Mr. Herron.
Thank you. I guess my first questions, and I'll be listening to what other board members have to say, are about things like the hiring of occupational therapists. When was the last time that we had occupational therapists on staff?
I would not be able to answer that question. I don't think we did provide OT services. I think this county has always provided the services.
So is the idea that we would be offering the same pay scale as the county?
There are certain regulations that we follow by ed code. And one of the regulations is that we are required to offer the number of years of experience and that's it. The salary and benefits are according to our salary.
Because my concern is, obviously, it sounds like we don't have a, we don't have a salary range necessarily set up since we don't, we don't currently have this position. And my concern is, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, because I keep thinking about the speech and language pathologists where it's like gold dust to find somebody to come into the district. And I'm concerned that it might be similar for occupational therapists where if the county people, for whatever reason, decided that they didn't want to work for us, what would it be like to try to hire into that position?
Well, just as we do with our speech pathologists, we certainly would post the position. And if we cannot, then we would look at contracting until we can find quality individuals that have the appropriate credentials. In the case of the OT, I know that we, it's also of who you know in the community. And we are acquiring staff that know former or know of occupational therapists. And we would certainly encourage them and myself to encourage those to apply for our position, the position of the OT. So it's always a gamble with the county. I just know the county, they lost a couple of SLPs where we're in good shape. And I believe our reputation is that people do want to come and work for us.
But is, in general, is that a, is it like nurses? Are there too few occupational therapists for the number of jobs that are out there? Or do you know?
No, I would not know on the OT. I know for speech therapists, it's, there is a shortage. And it goes back to the training. It's very competitive to get into the program. But on OTs, I don't feel we're going to have a problem finding 2.5. I really believe that those who are going to be displaced, especially if they live in our area, I don't think they would want to travel 32 miles going towards Ventura or wherever there's an opening. But we are expanding our services as we had presented in our, we have been talking about that we would like to expand services. Our goal is to provide services for our own students. And I think that's the goal that we would like to have instead of having someone else come in and do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Herron.
Have you or human resources looked into the pay scale that these OT are currently getting versus what we can offer?
As far as the pay scale with the county, no. There is a meeting that has to take place. If the board approves, then our human resource will be meeting with the county's human resource. And also, our fiscal staff will be meeting with the county fiscal staff.
It seems, you just said to do it after we approve. It would seem to me, I'd like to know what the current schedule is before we approve it to know if we can come in, we're close to meeting it. To me, that's pure, to me, that's just pure investigation to see what's going on.
Well, then, maybe I should respond in this way. OTs are similar to speech therapists and their salary is equivalent. OTs have a master's degree they're required just as speech therapists. So they kind of fall in the same range. So when we did our computation, we looked at our speech therapist salary and we looked at the OT. I think the difference with the county and our district would be the medical benefits.
Okay. On one hand, there's 128, 129, 128 students currently receiving OT.
Right.
But are only 99 of those our students?
No, 128 are ours, but there are some in regional programs. As I stated in my report, that we will not be providing services to our students who are in the regional programs.
Will we have to pay $3,000 for those that remain, the 28?
Yes, that's what the current cost is, yes.
Then comparing your cost based upon 128 times 3,042 and the savings based upon 99, aren't you missing the computation of 29 times 3,032 as far as a cost that will remain?
Well, the reason why we're projecting 99 is because when we look through some of our students, some are going to phase out. And so that's why this is a projection. And this is the best estimate that we can give you at this time. We don't know exactly how many students we have. We can just project from what's on data. Some may move, some may age out, but we do know that. In our regional program, there are some in there, and we're talking about the very severe students like at DP and Golita Valley and Monroe. Some of those students receive occupational therapy. But the majority are at our school sites and in mild-to-moderate programs.
But even to consider the savings that you talked about, $133,000 out of those savings, we're still going to have to pay for some students-
Yes.
-that are receiving OT services through the county.
Yes, and I don't have the number of students in the regional. I know it's not that many, but I can, I can come back and give you that information. I know it's not that many, but I can, I can come back and give you that information. I do know that we're, right now, we're just projecting the ninety-nine.
And how does this, how does this relate between elementary and secondary, the ninety-nine?
They're, they're K through twelve, the ninety-nine.
But...
Do you want to know how many?
Yeah, how many are in elementary and how many are in secondary?
I would have to give, I'd have to come back and give you that information.
Okay, I'd like to know that, yeah.
Okay.
So, my questions, I'm just trying to better understand this. So, can you tell me the benefits of moving this to our district, and then, then, I guess, the negatives? I'm trying to better understand and grapple with, because it's sounding like the money is, I don't know. So, can you help me understand?
Well, I think the benefits would be first, that we would actually be servicing our own children, and we would be assessing our own children, as opposed to someone else doing that. The other benefit is that if, if they are our OT people, and there is, there is some, maybe there's some difficult cases, we can have access to them immediately, as to where, right now, when we have high-profile cases and we're having to work with the county, we're always having to figure out schedules and when we're going to have the IP. So, there are those scheduling pieces that kind of get in the way, and it makes it difficult, especially when we're dealing with high-profile cases with attorneys. The, the other piece is that bringing our, our students, we have that connect with the parents. If they call us immediately and they say they, they have a concern regarding one of our service providers, we can immediately deal with that, as opposed to now, we don't. We're in collaboration with the county, and we really cannot, we can't, we cannot bring that staff in and say, you know, can you help us and, and understand why we're having this issue, and let's work something out and collaborate with the parent and resolve it.
What do you feel would be the challenges?
Well, I think...
Because I think, I've heard challenges from the board's perspective, which is, I mean, the hiring, and that's a huge one, because it's a great model, if we can get people to fill it, but if we can't, then it's actually not a model. So, then, but from your perspective, what are possible?
I think the challenge would be finding an OT, but I, like I said, I think we're in a better place, because displaced employees are going to look towards employment immediately, and I know that these individuals live in Santa Barbara County. That would be the challenge. As far as providing the, the services for our students, if they are the same OT individuals, well, really, the students are used to this person, so it's really not a change. The only change would be that we are the primary service provider, not the county. Should they not be OT that are working for, or they're displaced, and we would, the other challenge would be contracting out. We'd have to do a search, which we do now. If we are deficit an SLP, we have to search with a non-public agency, and we, we usually find them. You know, we just, it takes a lot of work, but, you know, that's, we're not afraid of work, we'll do that. As far as anything else, I think beneficially, is that we will be servicing our own students, and in collaboration of creating goals and working with the parents, and having the staff a part of our group, as opposed to trying to work with another agency.
So, is the job description the same for the county, I mean, or similar, I guess, for the county and for the district? And what I'm getting at is, I know that when we contract out to any agency with services, they usually have greater supply than someone is able to do in-house. So, I'm just wondering if we're going to be able to meet the needs that we have now with two-point-five, or how, I mean, I'm guessing you all did some calculation to figure out the two-point-five, and is that at the same level of service, or does the service change for where, I think?
It's, it's IEP-driven, IEP-driven. It's case-by-case, and, and that's why, Mr. Heron, you had asked, you know, ninety-nine, are we sure? No, it depends. You know, some students will require additional intensive services, where others will not, and others will be consult. And to also go back to the ninety-nine, some of them are consult. Consult means the OT just works with the teacher and says, here are some strategies to use, and then the teacher does it. So, it's going to depend on how many cases are consult. And according to the SALPA guideline, the consult, if you have two consults, that's equivalent to one direct service. So, that number, you know, I'd love to give you a clean number, Mr. Heron, but I'm not able to, because it depends. We'd have to go through all ninety-nine IEPs and determine whose consult, and how much time of OT services are required on the student's IEP. So, as far as the job description, OT job description is, it's, they're similar across, you know, the districts. We just may, need to make sure that they have the right qualifications to provide the services and receive the, the education in the OT field.
So, families with IEPs requiring OTs should expect the same level of service?
Yes, oh, yes. It's, we, you cannot change that. Only an IEP team can make that decision.
Okay.
And it's, so, the, this is, this, I think, this model, this program from the county is a lot easier to take back, and the county, they're in agreement. They said, sure, take your OT students back, and we're fine with that. So, this is an easy take-back, as far as providing the services. All we're doing is changing the primary service provider, which it would be the district, and we would service our own children.
So, you mentioned in the earlier part of your conversation, the presentation, that you had some parent input, and can you give me some specifics on what you heard from parents? Because I know that the meeting that took place, there was a hiccup, and there was last-minute notification, so I'm just wondering what kind of specific OT feedback examples you might have.
Well, one was, will you be able to hire OT? That was one. And others were asking, were my services going to change? And of course, again, that is not going to happen. And then, other comments were not really towards OT. They came to the meeting because they want, had other concerns about their children, not over OT. But those are the two that stand out, that the parents were asking.
Okay, thank you.
And we are going to have parent training that's coming up, and we plan to present this again, and have, have them give us some more input.
Oh, so there's going to be another process for parent input?
Yes, uh-huh, we plan to do this.
Okay. Ms. Parker?
Thank you, and I, and I apologize if it, you may have said this at the beginning, and I may, just not have made a note of it. For the a hundred and twenty-eight students that the county is currently serving, with their current IEPs, and recognizing that that will all change, I'm just curious with the current numbers, what is the county FTE for OTs that are serving those a hundred and twenty-eight?
Right. We're in collaboration with the county, and Kathy Breen, she's the one who said and recommended that we would need two-point-five OT.
But do, for, for next year? But I'm curious, for this year?
For this year, I would not know how many they're servicing. But if they're following the SALPA policy, it's from twenty to thirty as a caseload for an OT person. So, and, and then, again, they have this, they have this exception, where if they're two consult, then that's an equivalent to one direct service.
But that's a number you could easily find out, though, right? How many? Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, it sounds like there's some follow-up information that has been requested, so how would the board like to move forward? I think this one was on a time constraint, you mentioned?
Just go forward in a fraction, for action?
Follow-up?
Sure, we'll get the information to you in between.
Yeah, if it does come back, I would like more detailed financial information.
Okay, we can do that.
And then, I think we also have the piece of what the county, the FTE, the current, yeah, the current FTE for the county. And then, in between the time it comes back for us, is that when the next parent meeting's going to take place?
Yes.
Okay, so then, we'll have more parent feedback?
And we'll also, we'll also send you information as to when the next parent training. We're going to have it in the morning, and then also in the evening.
Okay.
And so, hopefully, we'll get a good turnout.
Do you know the date for that now?
No, I don't, but we'll, I'll have it sent to you tomorrow.
Okay.
Give you that date.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, so, next, we have the presentation for KSEP, who has, folks have also been patiently waiting.
So, at this time, I'd like to present Mrs. Michelle Robertson, who is our new coordinator of child development, and I believe Dr. Patricia Madrigal will be accompanying her if she needs any additional information.
She's my official note taker. So, it's my job in the last fifteen minutes to keep you awake, and I'm going to try to be as brief as possible, because it's been a really long night. So, I am Michelle Robertson, preschool coordinator, and my sole job in the district is to get the kids ready to come into the district. In fact, many of them are part of our district already, so no offense to Dr. Cash, but I think my is the most important job in, in the district, so. Yeah, so, go ahead and get started. I know I'm preaching to the choir here when we talk about the importance of school readiness, so this is really for our TV audience at home in, you know, their pajamas, if they're still awake. But why do we care about school readiness? And just want to note that in a study of California students, Russ Rumberger from UC Santa Barbara found that forty percent of students' fourth-grade English language arts achievement were explained by the experiences and skills that the students had the day they first stepped foot into the kindergarten classrooms. So, we know, there's a lot of studies right now, that that first day of kindergarten and how they enter really affects the trajectory of their success later on in their school. Next slide. I just wanted to, to let you know that UCSB has been studying the kindergarten readiness through a longitudinal study. This is not our school district here, so I just wanted to use it, though, as an example. This is actually Santa Maria Benita School District. And they found that those kids who entered kindergarten ready, which is the green, by the time they were taking CST tests later on, that they scored proficient or advanced at about, I think it's about fifty, fifty-eight or fifty-nine percent. So, so again, there's a direct correlation between kindergarten readiness and what's happening in the first and second grade to get them ready. So, it's just another snapshot of how we can use it with other district assessments. We're always talking about the achievement gap. This is another part of the longitudinal study. So, those on the bottom line were children who entered not only not ready, as indicated by the kindergarten student entrance profile, but they also had really low words per minute in their fluency. There are some kids that were catching up, that's the orange line there, not, not quite to the ready, but almost. And those kids, even though they scored, you know, about the mid-level or low on the KSEP, they did have a high vocabulary when they came in. And that's really attributed to their language proficiency, and again, that academic vocabulary when they entered. So, that is good news, but you can see those that, again, with the low KSEP and low words per minute, the gap just got wider and wider by the time they got to the spring of their, I think that's second-grade year. Okay, so what do we mean when we talk about school readiness and kindergarten ready? We're really talking about, not only are the children ready, but the families are ready for the culture of school, and that the schools are ready to accept the children that they are bringing in. And so, there's, there's a culture shift, not only because we have different, different demographics every year, but also in how much the community is embracing and valuing school readiness. So, the way that we measure it is through the kindergarten student entrance profile. Again, this is a tool that's been around for quite a while. It was actually designed and first implemented between first five, Santa Maria Benita School District and UCSB. It was taken directly from the state assessments for preschool, which is called the developmental profile, desired results developmental profile. So, it's very developmentally appropriate, and there's nothing in there that really would not be, you know, termed acceptable for that age group. The KSEP really looks at two different areas. One is social-emotional, and we know that that is the foundation for any future learning, that if children are not feeling confident, if they don't have the supports that they, they need to succeed, they're not going to be able to use that frontal lobe, school-ready cognitive knowledge that they, they need to succeed. So, I'm not going to go through this, because you can read, and again, I'm trying to be brief, but these are the social-emotional indicators that we look at, and I'm going to talk about a few in specific when we get to the results later on. But this is an example. There is a rubric, so when the kindergarten teachers fill it out, they actually have the rubric right in front of them. They don't have to kind of shift back and forth, and they just circle it. They just circle where they're at. There doesn't have to be any kind of notation or anything. The KSEP is meant to be an observational tool, that the kindergarten teachers look at it over the first three to four weeks of school. They're not supposed to just fill it out when they get it. They know that they're supposed to be looking for these things. The second part is the school-ready knowledge, and this is more of the academic skills that we expect for kindergarten, you know, recognizing shapes, knowing their colors, being able to write their name. Item thirteen was a new item that was added this year, and that's names of uppercase alphabet And then, this is just another example of the rubric for that indicator. All right, so the, after we get all of the KSEPs back and we score them, they're really put into four categories. One meaning immediate follow-up, meaning they got really low scores. That means there's probably something going on, we need to follow up, maybe also look at some developmental delays, looking to see if they had any IEPs, things like that. Monthly monitor means they're, again, not, not quite there, but we're going to check in to see how they're doing over the next couple of months, see if they, they do some catch-ups. Some of that may be social-emotional, and they need to acclimate to school, and maybe the school-ready knowledge can be assessed after they've settled in a little bit. Quarterly monitor, we also call almost ready, and that means they only missed maybe one or two from the ready-to-go matrix, and so, again, we're pretty confident that with, you know, the good kindergarten teaching, that they're going to catch up by the end of October. And ready-to-go means they've met about eleven, twelve, or thirteen of those indicators. And again, this is just a snapshot, and we encourage the kindergarten teachers to use the other district assessments as a way to get a whole picture. So, in summary of why school readiness is important, is all of these things right here. But specifically for those business and economic enthusiasts, you know, this bottom line is important. Not only does it save money for our society, but it's hopefully going to save us money on special education costs later on, if we can catch it early. All right, so now, let's get our true picture of what the 2013-2014 kindergarten class looks like. Recently, in the last couple of weeks, we've been getting back the first of our preschool surveys that were sent home, and this was to look at the preschool experiences of the children who came in. We also ran these numbers off of Aries, so they should be pretty accurate. Out of the parent survey, only about two-hundred-and-fifty-three of our over-five-hundred kindergarten parents brought it back, but it's about a third, you know, and so, it's a, it's a good sample size. Out of the services that they accessed prior to kindergarten, the majority, which is about twenty-six percent, was for physical health needs, and then it kind of goes down. Thirty-nine percent of our kindergartners actually went to our Santa Barbara, oh, there's a U missing there, but Santa Barbara Unified School District run preschools, which are on about eight campuses, and we have a few children's centers. Only about six, possibly up to eight percent of our kindergartners had no preschool experience. That's actually pretty remarkable for such a large district. I expected about thirty percent would have no preschool experience. So, six is a really manageable number for us to go out and recruit, and then come up with strategies to work with parents. And then, that means fifty-three percent had been enrolled with one of our community partners. We also looked at who'd been in our Avancee program, which has been piloted at McKinley and Harding for the last four years, and, and who's in HIPPI. And we're going to be doing... And we're going to be doing some, what we call deeper dive analysis of this data in the next couple of weeks.
I have a quick question, sorry, back to that slide. So just want to be clear, 6% of the respondents had identified that or 6% of our district, like all the students?
That is actually out of Aries, so it's all students.
All students, thank you.
Yeah. All right, so this is how our schools did and where they're at. So we do not have data for Cleveland or the Academy because they started in July. But talking to those two principals, we will implement that with them next year so that they're on the track with us. So out of the 595 students, we had about 28% of our kindergartners come in ready. And if you couple that with the almost ready and the ready-to-go together, that's about 68%. So that's actually pretty good. We have some work to do. And you can see from the different schools, and you'll see it better on the next slide, which of our schools are struggling a little bit more. And I have to put in a plug for Wayne Cole to let you know this is Illuminate. And so it was really cool. This is what all teachers can do and all schools can do with their data. Go to the next one. Yeah.
Todd, I guess you too.
Yeah, he's smiling, like all that work, yeah, paying off. So this is actually a kind of a cool slide. And I really want to point out here, Harding and Washington, they're the same exact scores in terms of school-ready. And that's pretty remarkable in that Harding is 100% free and reduced lunch and Washington is, Emilio, help me out?
Is not.
Is not.
Is not a Title I school.
Right. So in terms of how far they came, we have put a lot of intervention efforts in there over the last four years with foundation dollars. And so they, they're, they're doing pretty good, you know? And so we're excited to see as we start to really go district-wide, we've really looked at the West Side Thrive Project as, as a pilot for us and how we're going to expand. I'm excited to see how that's going to affect the East Side next. And then here's a breakdown of the actual indicators and what we're going to be working on first. So the two lowest scores out of the 13 items were maintains attention to tasks and the naming of uppercase letters. But the next two, actually the next three were impulse control, persists with tasks, and demonstrates expressive verbal ability. And so those are all social emotional items. And we're going to be not only working with our own school district programs on how we can support that, but we will be working with our community partners and sharing this information with them. The other cool thing about Illuminate is being able to filter out the data. So out of our non-disadvantaged, English proficient students, 47.93% were ready to go. But then as I started to break down by risk factors, we had males with low socioeconomic status, only at 13.73. Females with low socio, so SES, 24.36. Just by adding one more risk factor of English language learners, it went down to 19.20. And for males, only 11.21 with those three risk factors. So that tells us too where we really need to target. All right, last slide. Did I do it in, oh, I didn't, 15. Okay, next steps. We are going to be just meeting with the kindergarten teachers first to make sure that the validity of the task was, was met. This is partly because we want to start doing vertical articulation between the preschool and kindergarten so that we're aligning strategies and standards and expectations. We also want to do horizontal articulation with all of our community partners. So at the last preschool luncheon that Dr. Cash hosted, we had a number of preschool directors there who were interested in finding out their students' KSEP scores. And a number of them have already emailed me, so I'm forming groups in Illuminate for them. And then finally, to really get this information out to parents of the preschool, our preschoolers, because they need to become informed and empowered about how they can help and become partners in this. It's our goal to get all the children who enter Santa Barbara Unified School District ready for grade level expectations, so. Questions?
Thank you, Dr. Bass.
I knew you would be first.
I knew you'd go first, yeah.
Funny that Michelle's putting this together because I did a whole presentation on what impacts school readiness for our commission.
Yes.
And it's actually in front of me right now. I'm looking at it right now. But one thing I wanted to note that beyond the pieces that you presented, that you talked about overall health, overall health of a child is also a critical piece. Gender, you're already noting it. Gender is actually more important.
Yeah.
More important than actually preschool experience and the readiness of children. As it was shown on the slide, actually, girls are more ready than boys at about a 14 percentage point difference in school readiness. Poverty, you didn't talk about poverty, but somewhat in terms of that last slide.
Socioeconomic.
Yes, it's a big factor. Mother's educational level, you didn't necessarily talk about that, but that's another important thing. Lack of frequent reading, looking at books by a child is also another important factor. Parents smoking in the home is also incredibly important factor to consider, and that actually impacts, why? Because we're talking about prenatal care, about having a lot of different things, low birth weight, all of those things that impact development of children. So I just wanted to put those out there as well. That's another set of factors to think about in terms of school readiness. So anyways.
And I can assure Dr. Bass that if I had more than 10 minutes, I would have gone into more detail, yeah. We also, I'll just, I'll just speak to that a bit. We also, right now currently, have sent out developmental screenings to all preschool families. Those are due back on Friday, so we're going to have a universal screening on that prior to kindergarten. And we're also tracking BMI in terms of health. And we just had our big health screening where we screened 420 preschoolers on dental, vision, hearing, BMI.
Ms. Parker? And then Ms. Idelson.
I was really startled by that 6% number. I, I, that does feel manageable. And, and I guess that probably compares pretty well to, to other districts, but that...
Way better than other districts, yeah.
Yeah, I thought that was great for our community. I think I just need a little bit of clarification. So the data that we're seeing, that we're seeing tonight, was data that's collected by kindergarten teachers in the first three weeks of this year.
Yes.
So it's very fresh.
Very fresh.
And one, it is really interesting when you see the, the non-Title I schools and the Title I schools in comparison and see that a lot of them are actually, the, even the Title I school, like Adams for example, is higher than the non-Title I schools. But one question is, I don't know if you've drilled down to this level, and when you see the kids that are ready to go, are they coming from our preschools? Have you done that level of analysis? Or from what you called our community partners, which I love? Because I know that Dr. Cash has had that meeting with the private preschools and the, you know, the other preschools that are, that are, that work with our students in other capacities and, you know, it's kind of a wild card out there, but it's so important. So have you, have you done that level of analysis?
I haven't had time yet, but I do have the kindergarten students who came from our child development were almost exactly the same numbers as our district-wide data. So I think for the ready-to-go, instead of 28%, it was 29%. So a little bit, so, but I will do it actually by preschools and, but more as a group, like Head Start or Faith-Based that, I mean, I'll give the individual data to the preschools who have worked.
So you can, is that in Illuminate?
Yes.
Where they went to preschool? This is fantastic.
Yeah, it's really, really cool.
What a great tool for all these private preschools. I mean, obviously, I was, I'm also floored by the percentage of our students that really were in our preschools. I didn't expect that to be so high. But clearly, the majority are still coming from outside preschools. And so what an important gift to give them so that they can look at their numbers. Thank you.
Ms. Idelson?
Just be curious, would there be any breakdown as to whether they were in full-time versus part-time daycare-type settings and what age they started that experience?
Yeah, we can do all that.
You can do that with, say, private or district?
Yes, yeah. Because they pretty much just email me their names and then once I run the score, then we can do the follow-up questions like you're asking. Like for ours, it's easy because they're either part-day, full-day, part-year, full-year, you know, all of that. But, and Head Start's a lot easier to do too. It's getting down to the nitty-gritty of those community partners because they have three-quarter days and they have Monday, Wednesday, Friday. They have, you know, all this stuff. So we will look at dosage, is what we call it, yeah.
And then also, did the children start at infancy or were they toddlers when they went in?
Yeah. That's a big piece that we're still trying to work out is how to measure the zero-to-three components. Because they, we could do a lot of stuff in zero-to-three, but then if they have preschool on top of that, then it's harder to kind of filter it out. But we're going, we're going to work on it till we get it, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. This is good news for our district. Thank you. All right, so let me ask Dr. Cash, the citizens' appointments, are those time-sensitive? I mean, they're quick, they're literally saying yes.
They, yeah, they are. I would hope that you would be thankful for their volunteering service to our oversight committees and move to approve their appointments.
Great. Dr. Drotti?
He doesn't have to say anything.
Can I just say so moved?
Yeah. Do you want me to say something or are you guys okay with it?
No.
Mr. Herron?
Aren't there some we have to sign? I mean, there's...
There's the list.
The first two names are on the second set and...
They're willing to serve, you can certainly assign them or we could let them pick once you've approved them.
Good, that's best.
Okay, so this is a conference agenda item, so I think we're only saying, yay, bring it forward? Or why is this?
Yeah, do you want action on this?
That would be great. Action would be wonderful.
So this is the second time, just FYI, that this has been on conference where I think it's meant to be on action.
Should be on action.
So heads up on that. All right, so we do have a motion by Ms. Parker. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Herron. Any additional discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Dr. Drotti, this is the easiest item you've ever had to present.
Quick, sit down.
All right, so we will be, I believe we'll be tabling the discussion for field maintenance or?
Unless you have any burning questions.
Okay. No, so no burning questions. We'll be tabling the discussion of field maintenance and scheduling an agreement between the city of Santa Barbara and Santa Barbara Unified School District to our next or to a future board meeting. Board, are there any agenda items that you would like to see move, brought forward?
Can that number four be brought back as an action item next time?
That would be great, yes.
Sure. It can be brought back as an action. And I do want to remind the boards, the board that we have two more meetings left this calendar year. So one meeting in November, one meeting in December, so this is a great time to bring anything forward if you want to see it discussed in 2013. Yes.
Perhaps not discuss, but I think this last presentation was great in that we're already using Illuminate and putting data up. So maybe an update about, you know, how we want to move that or continue to move that forward and have that sort of continual feedback that's coming to the board, which I absolutely love. So I think it's great, but maybe an update on that or as a topic.
So Illuminate.
Yeah.
Sure.
Aren't you excited, Mr. Rickman? All right.
I heard there might be a discussion with FICMAT. If possible, the next meeting may not be the best meeting for that.
Yeah, that's a, that's... Because that's, will be a lengthy conversation and in light of the probable length of the conversation in relationship to the charter renewal.
So then the option is?
December.
December or?
January.
January.
Or, I mean...
Or a special meeting?
I'd say December or January.
December or January?
Okay, we'll do.
Okay. All right, so with that, we will adjourn our meeting.
See you all tomorrow.